All right, we were just in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the MTA. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Teachers and citizens and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Right now, we would like to have a moment of silence in respect for Mike Sullivan, who served us for 44 years and we are very grateful to his service and all that he gave to our town. So if you could stand for a moment of silence, please. First of all, thank you all for coming and right now, we will open up the floor for public input. Yes, please. Could you please go up to the mic, state your name and your address, please?
My name is Donald Rankin. My address is 13 Spring Valley Road. And in reference to the discussion about reopening the superintendent's contract and for the purposes of giving him a raise, I think that's ill-advised at this time. We have a town meeting coming up shortly and there's discussion about cutting back on a lot of things that this town does for its citizens. And I think it makes sense to wait to see what's going on at the town meeting before opening up a contract that still has two years to go for the purposes of giving a raise. Thank you.
Mr. Rankin, why do you think we're opening up to get a raise?
That's what I've been told. Is that incorrect?
Yeah.
Oh, well, great. Mr. Ankraf, thank you.
Anyone else like to know their public input?
Robert Booker, One Glover Place. And this is my first meeting, so I have no idea what your protocols are or your rules. You opened the meeting by saying you were going to talk about an MTA contract, but then the gentleman addressed the upcoming renegotiation.
Maybe I can shed some light, Mr. Ankraf. Tonight, we just called a vote on an extension of Dr. Morrison's contract. Nothing that we discussed tonight will change the compensation that's in his contract, FY '19, FY '20, FY '21. So if you've all been misinformed about that, I apologize for that. But that was never, what was on our agenda was never even discussed, so.
Okay, all right.
So Maya also said that the...
I'm sorry.
I would love to say that the, when she was referring to the negotiation with the MTA was with the contract, the contract that was being negotiated.
And that's an executive session?
Yeah, that's, okay. So I would just, since it was raised, I would support the gentleman and a lot of discussions about budget need to go for the town before it starts being negotiated here. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so right now, we'd like to review the minutes.
Madam Chair, I've reviewed the minutes from January 7th to January 28th, 2019. I, to the best of my ability, compares them against the video to avoid another open meeting law complaint and I move that they be accepted as submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On the floor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Now, we go to Mary.
If anyone needs to make a little more to hear me.
The microphone?
I don't think the mic.
I don't know, I can't hear you.
It's for recording.
The microphones are only for, we don't have amplification, but the room, the microphone is for the television, so we'll try to keep our voices up.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, as you know, the area started on July 1st and part of our major plan was to go through and meet a lot of folks through that whole process. And the ending part here is the presentation with the committee and issue making recommendations to the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Thank you, everyone. I wanted to thank everyone for all the time that I have spent with people throughout the last couple of months. For just kind of an overview of what I did, I used a variety of different data sources. So formal and informal interviews, as well as a lot of document reviews. There were lots of really helpful documentation for me, including the CPR review, which I spoke to a few months ago, but as well as that, the kind of Medfield 2021 strategic plan, as well as the student handbooks, school committee policies, the special education department program review, which was very helpful, which was just done recently, school improvement plans and the budgets for both FY '18 and '19. And then I also did informal visits to the schools as well. For the interviews, as you know, for anyone that has received my lovely email every month and my blogs, I was welcoming people to come in anytime and continue to say anyone who would like to talk with me. Although this part is done, I am always open to having people visit. I did 21 interviews with eight staff, one school committee member, 11 parents and one former student, which was very fun. The average length was about 41 minutes, with the longest being 110 minutes and the shortest being 10 minutes. I asked a variety of questions, which were, please give me an autobiographical sketch. That wasn't used for any data purposes, it's really just used for me to get to know people. I'm new to the district, I'm new to everyone, so it was really a great opportunity for me to just get to know people. What are your overall impressions of the schools? From your perspective, what do you think are the key issues facing the Department of Student Services? What are the important elements of the Department of Student Services that you most want to preserve? And describe the leadership that you want from me as the new director of Student Services. I felt that it was a good set of questions and was going to give me kind of a glimpse into what people were thinking and feeling and ways to move forward. Of the findings, there were, overall, it was that people are just very, very proud and happy with the staff within Medfield Public Schools. It's one of the greatest assets of the school district. And among that, the Department of Student Services in particular, has caring staff that are trying to think outside the box to support students and to make sure that they form some true connections with their schools. Family members, staff and students all value communication and feel that within the Department of Student Services, this is something that definitely needed improvement. Medfield Public Schools has a strong academic focus with good academic programming throughout. However, for those students that struggle, it seems that there aren't necessarily the best supports for students beyond kind of the special education programming. The tier support is not consistent across all the district. That includes the SST process, accommodations and interventions look different at each school, D cap accommodations are accessed in different ways and the special education process itself can feel a little bit disconnected and not always kid-centered. The administrative structure within the Department of Student Services is still a little bit confusing. I think that we continue to kind of try to flush that out. As you know, the introduction of team chairs was added recently. And I think that while it hoped to kind of clear the confusion amongst everything and to spread some of the work so that liaisons could really focus on students, sometimes it's a little confusing who to turn to, team chairs versus the coordinators. Transitions from school to school can feel a little bit difficult, especially for those receiving services. And more consistent communication and documentation is needed to really make sure that that's a smooth process for students. The RISE program has been a strong addition to the program and supports students that have been hospitalized. And the district is looking for a director that communicates clearly and consistently, develops a vision for the department, empowers and supports all members of the department and will look at things from above to streamline the supports across the district. So with these, these are kind of the areas of focus that I'm hoping to recommend tonight. Within the area of curriculum and instruction, there's definitely a need for a clearly articulated SST process, that's the student support team process, that is consistent from grades pre-K through 12. There's a need to review the district accommodation plan and the building accommodation plans to assure consistency and appropriate planned growth, demonstrating developmental changes. Support for all staff to successfully work with diverse learning styles and to kind of clarify the direct skills taught to the students within that RISE program. As I said, people felt it was a very positive program addition, but what direct skills were being taught within that program, people felt that would be something that would be beneficial to be kind of flushed out. Within the area of leadership, as I said, there's a need for clear, consistent communication from the Department of Student Services. There's a need to develop a vision and a clear plan for the Department of Student Services. And again, there's that confusion over the roles of team chair and coordinators and the exact responsibilities of each. Within the area of personnel, ongoing teacher training and empowerment, professional development options for staff from Student Services Department specifically and consistent leadership from the director of Student Services position. So these are kind of the current steps and current actions and the next steps that I'm hoping to take to kind of address some of these needs. First, we have developed regular meetings with the coordinators, team chairs and guidance content specialists. Previously, it was typically the director with the coordinators and then once a month, the team chairs came. Now, the team chairs are coming more regularly and the guidance content specialist has been added into those meetings so that we are able to streamline support processes, as I said, pre-K through 12 and not just for special education services. The monthly call from the Office of Student Services hopefully is adding some of that communication and helping to kind of spell out things that are going on directly within the department. There's continued work between myself and the Office of Student Emotional Learning, of Social Emotional Learning, sorry, trying to make sure that we can kind of continue to bridge that gap and support both areas and to make sure that we can continue to spell out the skills that students are learning within the RISE program. The diverse learning styles, as I said, I think there's more, what came out was that there's more need for all staff to have training within this area. We did do a presentation across all grade levels at this point, from pre-K through 12, on diverse learning styles. Again, that came up through some of the CPR work and it was a great opportunity for us as a department to put a presentation together and to work with staff across the district, which was completed in January. Department-wide PD offerings, so far, we're trying to offer more times where the Department of Student Services staff can get together to work on things together. We met in the beginning of the year for one of the first times to have all areas, both for ELL, nursing, guidance and special education all together in the room. We met at one of the early release days to have a legal expert come in and kind of present on a variety of topics and answer questions and support and facilitate that communication. And we met as related service providers across the district to try to support more holistic and consistent related service providers throughout the district. This summer, we plan to propose R and D work on both the SST process as well as interventions, recommendations. The hope is that we'll have a consistent set of forms for the SST process that can be used pre-K through 12, as well as to start to develop an intervention manual that will provide recommendations and interventions based off of specific findings of ways that students happen to be struggling. We also, part of the strategic plan, was to put together focus groups with staff and administration from the special education department, so those I'm hoping to have in the fall of next year. And I'm hoping that between all of this information, as well as the CPR review, as well as those focus groups, I can use that to finally kind of formalize my recommendation for the administrative structure within the department that hopefully will spell out roles and kind of expectations for everyone. So staff, students, parents know exactly who to turn to and when. And those are the formal recommendations and next steps I have. Any questions?
What kind of R and D work do you engage in to flesh out the processes? Research about the districts, sort of collaborate with your team, what are you talking about?
Yes, so we met kind of just preliminarily with the administration and the guidance and the SST chairs from the secondary level a few weeks ago to kind of talk about this and see what we were hoping for. One thing that we are trying to do is now reach out to like districts, find some of their SST process and forms and go through those in comparison to what we currently have. Also, the elementary SST process was redone recently and kind of has more forms that they have started to roll out. We want to make sure that we can look at those and assess how they would apply at a secondary level and vice versa, to make sure that those things are more holistic. Within this R and D process, it won't be me alone. It would most definitely be the guidance team as well. I would need to have people that are on the floor and kind of the ones doing the work day to day. I can make all the recommendations in the world, but I'm not the person that's going to be carrying it out and I'm not the person that's going to be at the table making the recommendations. So my hope is, once we have approval for R and D, to collect a team that ideally would be as holistic and global as possible, which would include general education teachers as well as the specialists that sit on the SST committee, as well as guidance counselors.
Do you expect that it funds some of the efficiencies in this process compared to the way it is today? What are some of the pain points you've seen today?
I think that that's going to be part of the process, is seeing what people feel about the process today. I think in general, one of the things that we noticed is that the SST process is kind of trying to find that area that somebody is struggling in and providing interventions and data collection. We don't provide necessarily the data collection sheets for all staff or we don't necess... So then it's on the general education teacher potentially to try to figure out exactly, how do I create a data sheet? What's the most time-efficient form that I could use? So that you collect data that's meaningful, but it's not also taking away time from the classroom? Because we want the teachers teaching. And I want to make sure that if we're asking for data, we have data that's meaningful and data that can be analyzed and that way, we can make these kind of decisions and the next steps accordingly.
Will it be in a digital format?
I'm a big proponent of digital and data, if you can't smell. So yes, my hope is that it would be a digital format that would make it easy for all people. But being in the special education world as well, I will have paper copies for any that need it and pencils and make sure that there are a variety of different options so that people feel confident. I don't want people to feel as this is some kind of unachievable request that we have, but we want to also make sure that if we're putting interventions in play, that we have a way of assessing to make sure that those interventions are or are not kind of successful.
Mary, I'm very pleased to hear that you will be conducting focus groups. And I'm wondering, will you also have perhaps student focus groups? Especially at the high school where I think many can really articulate their experience and have a lot of feedback that we can learn from.
I would love to have student focus groups. The strategic plan itself references the focus groups of the staff and administration, but just interviewing the one former student that I had, it was wonderful for me. And they, one's living and breathing it, day in and day out. So how can we say what's successful and what's not and what makes sense and what doesn't if we're not talking to the people that actually experience it every day? So yes, I would love to have that as a portion of it as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sometime last year, when the district was approved to enter into the MSBA process with Dale Street, the committee asked me to talk to Dr. Morrison about potentially extending his contract so that we had a certain sense of continuity throughout that project. I was looking, most of you know tonight, to my last meeting. I was looking back at my old budget books and this time here, all the minutes get shoved into the budget book. And I came across FY '12. And FY '12, I think, was actually the second year we applied to be part of the MSBA process. And so here we are, putting together a budget for FY '20 and we're finally part of it. And I think that speaks to how important it is to have continuity throughout the district and especially in a leadership position. So I did have several conversations with Dr. Morrison. We discussed, you and I, the committee and I discussed some of the terms in executive sessions over the course of the past few weeks. Please recommend an amendment to Dr. Morrison's contract this evening. I'll just read through the highlights, it's pretty short. Again, I want to stress, despite what you've probably been heard, been told, this will not affect in any way Dr. Morrison's compensation for FY '19, FY '20 and FY '21. In each of those years, Dr. Morrison's contract already provides for a 2.5% increase. This contract provides for a 2% increase every year and extends the superintendent's contract through FY, through the end of FY '24, or through June 30, '24, that's FY '24. Effective FY '22, that's when his increase will change from 2.5% to 2% annually. Also, effective FY '22, we will add, currently we're contributing $5,000 to Dr. Morrison's retirement account, that will go to $10,000. For that first year of the extension, the effective raise will be just under 2.5%. Thereafter, it will be 2%, which is less than the current raise in his contract. The only other changes to add, council suggested that we add a performance section, which is now state mandated, it wasn't when we first entered into a contract with Dr. Morrison. It basically embodies the same evaluation process that we use here. We had some training on, I think it was two years ago, three years ago, because it was brand new then. And so I just ingrained that language onto the contract. Otherwise, the terms of Dr. Morrison's contract remain the same. Again, it's just extending it through June 30, '24. I recommend that we go to enter into his contract and approve it. I'm happy to answer questions. Jerry, you've got a question?
Jerry Potts, 7 Kerr Street. So while I understand there may have been misunderstanding on the contract extension, I do have to give a little bit of history because I was at the meeting the last time that this was discussed, which was April of 2016. And at that point in time, and I appreciate Mr. Morrison sharing the information about the contract, in 2016, the school committee increased, voted on an increase to $214,000 for the superintendent. There were no, there's no data provided to the public about where that number came from. And so my concern in seeing it on the agenda tonight is that that vote took place without any discussion of the financial numbers that were associated. So I very much appreciate this time, there is open discussion about the data, but that data was released actually in a public information request. Many towns actually published the superintendent contract as part of just being transparent. So there is a lot of concern, I think, that has been voiced about compensation overall for senior people within the community at a time where later, we're going to be talking about putting bus fees on. And so I just would comment that the current salary, while a 2%, 2.5% and a $10,000 retirement contribution doesn't sound like much, it's starting on a base that is significantly higher than just about any community other than Wayland. If you look at it for Hopkinton, almost any of our peers that we compare ourselves to, the superintendent contract is under $200,000. And so my concern on it isn't that these increases look reasonable, it's that it's from a benchmark that was established in 2016 where there was no public discussion about that number. It set a much higher amount that we're now adding 2.5%, 2% to each year. And so I would like to get an understanding of the kind of benchmarking that's done with other communities for the superintendent contract.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jerry. In fact, I noticed there was a patch article about this that mentioned Dr. Morrison's FY '19 compensation, but I compared it with FY '17 compensation for other people. Medfield superintendent in FY '19 will make total compensation, his annuity plus his salary, He has no assistant superintendents and he's been a superintendent for 13 years, six of which are in Medfield. The Walpole superintendent has total compensation of $222,906 excluding his tuition. And we understand that his tuition, full tuition, he gets full tuition reimbursement from CDC ED at BC. He has an assistant superintendent. The Needham, and he's been a superintendent for 12 years. The Needham superintendent has total compensation of $253,879 and has four assistant superintendents.
So can I clarify, generally, we use certain towns that we compare ourselves to?
These are all tech towns.
Well, the ones we usually, Hopkinton, the town, Westwood, Holliston.
Those towns that we compare for teachers' contract purposes are negotiated with the teachers' union. So we choose those towns based on a negotiated contract party procedure. These are the tech towns, these are the towns that are easiest for us to get benchmarks. Again, Westwood superintendent makes $221,000 in their second year as superintendent, has an assistant superintendent. Wellesley makes $255,000 plus up to $10,000 in bonus and has two assistant superintendents. So I, I'm a little offended by the suggestion that we haven't benchmarked. We benchmarked it then, as you know.
I don't know. Actually, it wasn't discussed publicly. And when I asked about it, we were told, basically, we shouldn't be asking. So there was pressure put on at that point in time, as though outing that public information was somehow disloyal to the schools, which was...
I disagree with that, Jerry.
I was at the meeting.
No winner said that, they haven't announced to me for nine years, I can't say today.
Well, I appreciate that the numbers are being discussed tonight. I think anyone who goes to April of 2016 will see they were not discussed and that a public information request is how that data came forward. It was not transparency by the school committee. So I'm raising it not because I'm trying to be difficult at a time when seniors are being asked to sacrifice, when we're talking about putting bus fees, which by the way, I might as well throw it in now, for the people who can least afford a bus fee, the ones who take the bus, right? Affluent folks can drive. At a time when we're looking at all these different ways, I just, you know, trying to raise the issue that we should, all of us, just ask questions. And I appreciate you asking and answering them. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to ask them and I appreciate the transparency this go around. Thank you.
Chris Potts, 7 Kerr Street. Since I'm the one that wrote that patch article and I spent quite a bit of time on doing the research for it, if you actually look at the numbers, the 2017 number that was comparing the other towns came right from the same source, that came from Open the Books. And it specifically had a footnote that said, this number is different because it's from Open the Books and does not, it works on a calendar year and not the fiscal year. So there were apples to apples in those town comparisons. And if we're talking about only looking at Holliston, Hopkinton, Westwood, the other towns that we talk about for contract negotiations, well, they're the same towns that we put out for bus fees. So you can't cherry pick and say, okay, we're going to pick these towns for this reason and then these towns for this reason, when it's a whole different, you just can't cherry pick that like that. So all those towns that are in there, that I selected in that patch article, were apples to apples. I did not take the current salary and put it against a whole different source. So I just want to make that absolutely clear. And I also think that at this time, what is, I want to know why the timing, why can't this wait? And I also think that at this time, what is, I want to know why the timing, why can't this wait for two months, like, per town meeting, until we know the full town financials? Why does this need to be?
This contract doesn't affect the system, your budget that we're voting on. Why would we need to, it has nothing to do with FY20.
What I'm just, my big question is, what is the rush tonight?
There's no rush. We've been negotiating this for almost a year.
Well, why are you, why the rush to vote tonight?
Because we've finished the negotiations.
That's not a good enough reason.
We vote contract when we finish negotiating. When we finish voting, when we finish negotiating with the NTA.
The contract doesn't expire for two years. So, why the rush? Why not wait, why not be fiscally responsible and wait until the finances come out in town meeting? So then, you can have maybe a longer-term projection and say, "Can we afford that higher retirement contribution?"
Okay. Again, the higher retirement contribution is in FY22. I appreciate your position. While you're here, I have an email that was forwarded to me by a bunch of people, and it, did you send this?
I don't, I haven't seen the emails, I don't know.
It includes what I think a lot of people are hearing about tonight. It said, "The contract discussion seems to be a last-ditch effort by a departing school committee member to play political games with taxpayer dollars before the town election."
Correct.
How many people did you send that to?
Does it matter? Why does it matter?
It does. Because I consider it defamatory.
No, why does it, why am I required to be transparent when you, as a public official, refuse to be transparent?
Because I consider this defamatory, and I want to know how many people dispute it.
You are a public official, that is an opinion. You're also an attorney, you should know the difference between defamation and...
I didn't interrupt you. I served on this committee for nine years. I've been on the budget committee for nine years. No one has ever accused me, and no one ever credibly will accuse me, of using tax, playing political games with taxpayer dollars. You may accuse me of it, but it's not credible.
Who is the one who brought forth the 6.1% budget increase last year and pushed that through? Who was the one that made that?
The school committee.
Excuse me?
School committee.
Go back and look at the meeting tape. Who was the one that brought that forward and pushed it through?
If you didn't vote for it, that's fine. I think the town spoke on it.
All I'm saying is, when you look at this agenda for tonight, and it says superintendent's contract, and you make an, there's an issue made about the fact that people came to assumptions. Well, if you don't want people to come to assumptions, then maybe be more specific on the agenda.
Appreciate your input. I made a recommendation.
I move to amend the superintendent's contract as written and as stated in the public meeting. Beginning fiscal year 2020, make sure I'm correct, it's 2022.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We'll leave the sign at that meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. All right, Medfield 2021, update and status.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, a lot of pages. We're just moving over results up to date to goal number one, because it's above 27 pages long. So, we'll have to scroll down to our 31th one. Just to give you a sense of where we are in our strategic plan. So, our first goal, and after taking the plan, is collaborative learning, goal number one. So, I will go through, again, this is a lot of data as well, just some of the feedback and some of the results that we got from where we are in the specific goals. And then, just off the MPD, more information, but if I go through each one of these, we'll be there. So, let's just look at number one, strategy 1.1, professional development. 1.1, 1.2, provide a menu of differentiated growth experiences for teachers. So, that was a 2017 to 2020 goals. That's ongoing as we go next year as well. So, one of the things that we started, and we'll be one next week, is teacher-directed professional development days. So, through our collective bargaining, in our interest-based bargaining process, that was something that interested teachers, that we looked at a couple of the professional development days, that they decide, they design, all that. So, so far, we had one in the fall, one in the spring, very, very positive of those. Certainly, teachers are allowed to go to conferences that support professional learning. Department chair work has been a big focus that we've been looking at. Medfield Learning Day, which is also a Medfield, it's a special learning day. Teachers are given, are given the opportunity to select topics of their own choice for the MSL study at the high school. And then, we have some other committees going on, report card comment committee at the high school revision, handbook review committee at the high school, SCL task force, challenge success, report card committee also going on at the elementary. So, all those are different experiences for teachers. Looking at some of the collaborative experiences, the next one, I'm not going to go through all of those, but you get a pretty good sense for elementary and secondary, some of the collaborative events that we're having with teachers and opportunities for teachers. A lot of them revolve along the CPT and the common planning time. So, that was something that we negotiated a couple of contracts, though we thought was really important for professional learning communities, having that common time where teachers can get together and meet during the same time, and hopefully during the school day. That's the important piece. So, we've done that through our scheduling and our contract. So, a lot of that good work that's happening is going on through the common planning time.
Jeff, what are pineapple lessons?
So, pineapple lessons, that's happening just at Dale Street right now. So, if a teacher has a pineapple hanging outside of their room, that's a welcoming sign. So, that means that anyone or any teacher can come in and observe them doing this. So, we have a lot of really good lessons going on at Dale, and the teachers are doing that. That's, and that's something that we all know is an important piece, of teachers watching other teachers teach.
And doing the things that they feel they most comfortable, that they really feel is like a part.
So, it's just that we get each other's classrooms, talking what we see. So, that's been something that Steve has started, and the teachers started last year, and it's really taken off this year as well. We'd like to stand that. So, the next one deals with common planning time expectations, on page three now. Looking at establishing norms, implement procedures for PLC, professional learning communities. That's broken up into elementary, because the preschool, we're doing that very consistently. And then, Blake in high school. One of the things that was identified in the ASR report for the high school was trying to get a better scheduled structure of common planning time for departments. And we're still working on that with the scheduling. I know we're doing a lot of work in SCL with the schedule of high school. So, that's all part of it as well. On strategy 2.1 HR, I'm on page four, attract, hire, retain the best teachers. So, look at the process that's outlined for elementary, Blake, and high school, very, very similar. I think one of the things you'll see is that we're all working with hire right now to try to get teachers in and student teachers in from Framingham State, Berkeley School of Music, Bridgewater State, and Simmons College, all trying to get those folks in. It's a great learning experience for the kids in the school, but also for our teachers as well. So, we try to look at those as eventual hires if we can. And then, outline the process and what that looks like when we hire teachers. Something that we're really excited about, 2.13, is the evaluation and looking at the rubric especially, to revise that rubric. Did you know that teacher rubric is the one we'll be? And before I got here, the district adopted that as what they were doing. So, we have a leadership team and members from the teachers' association. We've been working on trying to restructure that rubric that makes sense for us. So, almost identifying what are the power standards, so to speak, that we think are important for instructional learning in Medfield. And we've been working on that now for, since last summer. Vaughn and Gale, the great, we've been working with that, and also input from elementary teachers. So, we hope to have a draft to the school committee by December, excuse me, by June of 2019. And we're right now talking about how we're going to implement that. Are we going to do, are we going to implement that by a whole grade level, by certain classrooms, by volunteers? We're just trying to look at that. But it's really streamlining the process, and we think it's an important piece that we work together on, and we'll have some more information in June for you. 2.14, looking at revising induction and mentoring. 2.14 and 2.15 really go together. They're looking at that induction mentoring program that we're doing. So, every new staff person has two-year mentoring. We've tried to restructure this because Desi has given some more guidelines around this. If you remember years ago, a new teacher would be hired, they'd have to take a free credit course, and they'd have to do some technology work, and they'd have mentoring all at the same time. It was overwhelming for new teachers. I mean, the job is hard enough, you don't need to add all that on it as well. So, we revised that so that that first year is really working with a mentor exclusively, then with one class a month that we're doing in-house. And then, looking at it more broadly the following year. So, just some of the mentoring discussion themes that we talked about, relationships, communication, feedback, instruction, staying current, inclusion, diversity, tech integration, preparing students, leadership, classroom management, physical space, and time management. All issues that first and second-year teachers, whether they've been doing it for a long time or it's their first couple of years in the district, that's, those are the challenges that all teachers face. So, we've been really working with that. Matt Vaughn and Susan Bonikop have done a really great job revising that whole mentoring and induction program for us. I'll look at it on page six now, strategy 3.1, curriculum. So, the curriculum review process, so in the April or May meeting, Chris Morris will be here to present to you what we designed for the curriculum review process going forward. So, I know we're still in the process of hiring a director of instruction innovation for next year. But Chris has been doing a lot of the work to set this all up, so when that person comes in, he'll be ready to go and show I won. So, we're looking at that, and Chris will do a presentation to you on the process, either, like I said, April or May. We're really focused on science next year being the pre-K to 12 focus, the first curriculum review. That review is starting in six through 12, 12 already, or has done some work with that, we need to do it across the board. So, that will be our focus for next year. Page seven, STEAM, you know, strengthening, expanding our district offerings in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So, you see that the core curriculum is throughout the elementary school. But we're looking at some science consulting lessons that have been happening at Dale Street. So, Steve asked me if he could take some of his budget and look at having a science person come in and just do some model lessons with teachers. So, we're kind of, we're looking at that as a pilot this year, so far it's been very successful. And then, looking at the middle and high school, certainly, they're looking curriculum-wise. Blake is looking at the offerings in science and math. And then, one of the things that is, you know, from this past week, looking to expand even about one period in 19 and 20. You know, so that's, again, aligned with our curriculum, with our strategic plan, and it's an additional opportunity for the arts. At high school, we've expanded our offerings in these areas for the last couple of years. So, we've looked at engineering one and two, we've added computer science, robotics, the science we won't be adding, and then the math competition. So, all those fall under the expansion that we've looked at for STEAM. Elementary world language program, as you know, and it may was part of that group. We had that one year where folks went and studied and made recommendations. And we're slowly trying to implement some of those recommendations, and most of those are driven because we have to add additional time, actually, additional staff to make up for the time that we've taken to adjust it. But one of the things that we're trying to do memorial, start an after-school world language program so that it exposes kids in kindergarten, first grade to the languages, so that they get excited about that. So, when they get to WeLAW, you know, I think that would be a great term for them to do that. So, you know, the long-term goal could be to have world language do that memorial as well for K-1. But we want to start slow and look at just providing that after-school opportunity for kids.
Certainly, that was always part of the aspect, right?
Right. And that's a great way to do it, get people interested, get to see, you know, where kids are with that and what their excitement is. Strategy 4.1, looking at instruction and assessment. Again, these are ongoing till June of 2021, but we've outlined the different assessments that we're using in the buildings, elementary, et cetera, et cetera. So, again, with 4.14, develop targets, support instructional responses to close achievement gap, something that Mary was talking about earlier, you know, looking at what we're doing in the buildings to provide support. And that runs the gamut from elementary, looking at math specialists and reading specialists, special education committees, and collaboration with teachers. Always the high school, looking at sophomore math, support academic success, all those types of things that we're doing to support kids. Let's look at technology, I'm on the bottom of 11, right, actually, right above that. 4.16, revise elementary report cards, examine formal and informal systems of feedback, six through 12. Still looking at that formal and informal feedback of six through 12. I know we've done some work with standard days at the middle school. But the report card committees, we're working almost two years now, elementary work. And they have a great prototype, which they shared with the teachers in January. And now, the teachers are working with that prototype and making sure that it fits what they want to assess and what they want to communicate to parents. They plan on being here at the June meeting to present to you a finalized version of what the elementary report card will look like. So, they've done a great job of this. This is teachers volunteering after school with administrative, really working hard on this. I think their colleagues are pretty impressed when they presented to them in January. They did a lot of work in the series. So, again, they'll be in front of you in a couple of months. Looking at page 12, finalize the vision of our pre-K through 12 technology plan, something we really need to work on. We're almost there, but we feel like the new director of instruction innovation needs to be a part of that conversation, because we are talking so much about apps, instruction, and pedagogy, and how that all fits into the technology piece. So, we're going to, we got to a certain point, but we're going to try to finish that in the fall of this year when the new person's on. Same thing with the district-wide framework for training. Then, last thing, establish a systematic approach for warehousing and maintaining student staff data. So, this, the data person that replaced the retirement a couple of years ago has really done a great job in our student information system to clean up that data for both students and staff. And we also have 35 agreements in place with software companies as a member of the mass student privacy line. So, we're making great strides in that area as well. Certainly, we'll have more as we get to June of 2020. Certainly, happy to answer any questions, but that was a...
Speed version.
Speed version.
In regards to the report cards, and I know that you talked about this. When it says revise elementary report cards, does that just mean K through five? Okay, so the six, seven, eight is considered secondary?
Right. So, we're looking at, with the work that's been going on at the middle school with standard base. You know, one of the things that we're looking at now is like tightening that up now, because there's been some pilots around that. And the pilots have gone a couple of years, so now it's time to tighten that up. And we're working with our data person that is putting that in our student information system so that it'll be consistent to look the same, six, seven, and eight versus the different versions that parents see now.
And will they be consistent across the different classes, too?
Yes. Yes, that's the goal. I just, I think that that messy work of piloting is over now, we need to just kind of tighten it up a little bit and make sure that it's a consistent, at least visually, for parents, so that they're not confused, and kids aren't confused. We need to make sure that takes place. So, that's, that's why I'm working on that with the student information system with Aspen. They're uploading and designing that, so we'll be able to use that.
Yeah, and I have a question regarding the standard base. And I know they've been running pilots, and I know there's some feedback from different folks, and people have different feelings about consistency or the meaning. And I suppose what still resonates with me was when we had the freshman student council representative speak about standard base. And I suppose I, what I keep thinking about is what motivates students to work? And I just hope we can just, a comms or something, just, you know, where have these pilots, what's the data? Everybody's obsessed with data. But, so, where have we come from? Where are we? Where are we going with this? I suppose I need, I still need to comprehend all what's going on.
Yeah, I think there's definitely some more work needs to be done around that. You know, if you're looking at, I'm listening to those comments that night where kids were less motivated to share with us because they know they're going to get a one, two, or three, or whatever it was, and they focus on A, B, or C, you know? And then, you get that issue where if it's a one, two, or three, people translate that to A, B, or C. It really isn't transferable like that. So, I think clearly, the goal work to do with teachers, families, and kids, so they understand. You know, it speaks, we can get on a philosophical conversation. It speaks to what we were talking about with challenge success, about motivation, right? Are kids motivated by learning or degrees? I will say that in the many conversations I've had with kids in Medfield, a lot are motivated by grades. So, I think that that's something to be... Kids that do really well have told me, you know, even after, that I can't fit it all in. You know, so, I do what I can to get that grade, and, you know? So, I think that's, we need to have more conversation on that, so that everyone's clear.
Yeah, with teachers, parents, and feedback, not necessarily giving new life, saying, "Oh, it's grading." But, you know, around it, what motivates you?
And to thinking back on that, too, and I'm saying this as a parent and a school committee member, just what we need to glean from the standards raised grade is unclear. It's, you know, A, B, C, you're, oh, okay. It's encompassing everything from curriculum to learning styles, learning skills. But how do you read the numbers and the letters amidst everything else? It's just, it's confusing, and it doesn't...
It's really just a shift, it's a huge shift, because we've all grown up in the same grading system, right? We've all grown up that way. And now, you're saying that it doesn't mean A, B, or C. Now, now it means whoever that standard is, you did with a one, two, or three, or whatever it may be, you know, so...
But if you achieved that standard with a three, but you got all Os on your learning skills, does that mean you got to the end result the incorrect way? That's where it leaves me.
Right.
So, you get penalized and... So you get penalized then for not putting as much effort in as student D, but getting to the same result. And that is something that's inherently, I think, needs to be addressed.
Sure. We did also say that when on the A, B, C system, that some kids can just read, write, or get an A. Some kids have to work real hard to get a B.
But that's like.
Right. Like, like, you can do that.
I wasn't one of those people, just for the record, but, um, it just, I, I don't know, it just irks me. So that's my, get off my soapbox.
I think in Medfield, um, the school system in general is a very competitive school. Um, I think that I agree with the fact that most students are motivated by grades. Um, but me personally, I'm not motivated solely by the grades, but more by what the grades symbolize. Um, about my personal achievement and how it will affect my future, whether it be college and beyond. And so I think that's the main driving factor that motivates kids. And that reminds me of this. You agree with that?
I think a lot of it's too, just like, like all high schoolers compare themselves to other high schoolers. So I think that also motivates people too. It's just like, oh, who has a better grades? Like, oh, this person doesn't even care about his grades or like, this person cares so much about their grades. It's just all like comparing each other. I don't know.
I think this is why we're working with the challenge success and, you know, I think it's a huge culture shift that we have to deal with.
It doesn't have to open.
No, it doesn't.
And in fact, not any single one of us can actually grade that culture shift. That needs to be a community discussion about the positives and the negatives, quality ideas of putting out. I don't think that in terms of doing standard based learning, we're just throwing spaghetti at the wall and hoping something sticks. But we're trying to kind of go through and do an evaluation of this is helpful to our students. Is it helpful for shifting how you perceive your learning? Is it helpful in that way? And will it be helpful over time? Is it the simple shift that happens year after year and we still don't understand it better? Or if not, not, that's what pilots are for. But it is going to be a community shift that's what happens.
I think it's even varying that. Well, Maddie was talking about when she says high schools compare themselves, it doesn't stop at high school. College students compare themselves, adults compare themselves, you know, whether Mr. Knight drives a nicer car than I do or. We, we all tend to compare ourselves and he's always driving a nicer car. But we, you know, what was kind of, we, we, that, that's inherent in our society. We're better at words than public word. That's, that's part of what makes us a challenge and it's trying to break down really societal moment.
I think the other thing to reflect that is the, what we're talking about is the impact of the data. We're comparing ourselves to the, our data as a community compared to other data, data. Uh, and, um, because I'm looking at this and hearing about the report cards and the struggles about what they mean. You know, I'm working with tons of school districts across the country at this moment myself. And, um, the idea of they're trying to interpret all the work that they're doing and incorporate that into some profile of you as students and what that means. And what's effective in schools. My recommendation around the report cards is as you bring them in to Aspen is to make them machine readable. So that when you have an O and a combination of an O and achieving all those pieces. That translates into a, a machine readable standard. And you're aligning all those areas to standards that are often machine readable.
So I don't know if it works, understand what it is, but we're just doing that.
Well, actually you're able, you're able to compare, you're able to compare those results to the test results. All the other benchmark assessments that you're already collecting across that I asked you of earlier. So those pieces will all start incorporating together with the work that Mary's doing, uh, with interventions. And so now you're looking at them at the same, on the same screen. So these interventions help the student achieve these results and we don't want them to have. It's very hard to do when you have a report card that says one, two and three, or even an A, B and C. How did you get to the A, B and C? What does it mean? How many standards did you need to get there? And we have no idea. We can't tell you. And all we have is own tests that come from once a year of a test you took eight months ago. Takes us six months to unpack it. And if we get to figure out how to make changes, now it's fourteen months later and you guys are two grades ahead. So unfortunately our, our resolutions and our changes are updated by our challenges. And that's inherent in education and we can do better than that. So that's why I like that. The other thing I'd like, like to see is a group classroom across all classrooms. That's really nice. Uh, the parent portal gets turned on so we can see that we're going to. Other district, you know, a little more like that. Give it to the elementary, doesn't have a mission.
There is kind of a, I'm sorry, Peter, please go ahead.
I'm just gonna agree with what Mr. Morrison said. I don't think that the competitive nature of our schools is necessarily a bad thing. Well, it can lead to higher stress levels occasionally for the students. I think that it definitely does help prepare them for college and professional, um, and so. I think that, um, we should be mindful of that when we go about changing the grading system. Um, making sure that we can keep in mind beyond high school and like what we're preparing students for.
I think we're a long, long way from changing anything in high school levels, are afraid. We're a long, long way. As someone that's currently going on college visits with the son, um, every single college in our building, that's all we talk about is the letter grades, the GPA. How many AP courses you took. So we're a long way at high school. If I ever change, we might think about it at some point, but we're a long way at high school to choose places.
I think he's worked on school, still getting to college. So there are difference. I, I know, I, I'm just saying.
It may not, I, I like how you guys are now approaching it, like what motivates kids. Because it could be just that you don't have to change the grading system, maybe tweak it. But it's more like teaching kids at a younger age what should motivate them. Like, of like, we've always learned like the better grade, you have, the smarter you are, the more successful you're going to be. But that's not always the case. It's if you're a hard worker, you'll probably be more successful. So it's more about teaching kids what should motivate them instead of like what.
And engages them, right?
Yeah.
Because when you're engaged, you're motivated.
Yeah.
I do have to say that I, I, I think as, when I see, when I'm looking through kind of educational literature and listening to people and talking and reading that blog. And we're always talking about how we need to have the, the room to fail so to grow. And I think that that applies to the, the adults in the room as well. That we can fail in little ways and adjust and that's, that's flexibility. And I hope that when, and I'm not saying standard space learning is failing. I'm just saying that we're going to make a lot of mistakes and that the way we react to them, I will learn for our kids and for ourselves. About how you run success in a position.
So we call that psychological safety in our, in our organization here. That's what we call it. So you do what you want. You, you try to do a thing, it doesn't work. It's okay.
That's happened before in.
We call it.
I just want to mention one little thing with the, um, Medfield twenty twenty one under the two point one point five. Maybe next time we'll have a thing. And that is, um, with the mentioning of new teachers. Once SEL gets, um, where our work is getting more definitive, so to speak. That those practices get shared and added to the theme part of it as well as best practices. The other, last week, we had a session at a high school CTO navigating effective communication with parents, students and teachers. And there was a panel of teachers and, um, a couple of teachers. I know we can't force that we want to do the same thing, but there are practices that some use that would be great to have on. Yeah, and just modeling. We want to model how we want people to communicate and whatnot. So, um, some of the teachers have great, great practices. And you set the bar high at the beginning and you have those expectations. It's wise vacation because they know the expectations and they're, so anyways, thank you.
Thank you. I have no other reason to have a chair for business.
See her old, okay, old business, F R twenty budget update?
So in, um, in my conversation with members of the Warren Committee. And this is really from our last meeting, which we have, this is already to your budget goals, so it's already. I just want to go over the fact that we're down to a four point two percent. At this point, we're at four point five, uh, prior to this meeting. And then at, at the Warren Committee meeting, we had basic reductions in terms of our technology. And now we're down to a four point two percent. So we, we ended up reducing the budget by one hundred five thousand thirty dollars. So we're, we will do that three different ways. One, retirement at the Laurel School. So as you know, we budgeted for a certain number of sixty four or five, uh, when we hired a new person. So there's a significant savings there of twenty six thousand three hundred ninety. Long-term, um, leave of absence, uh, for someone at We lock school. Uh, we've extended that. It was this year, we extended it to one more year. So we're keeping the current person in there. So that's a significant savings of forty eight thousand six hundred forty. And then reduction in technology at thirty thousand gets us at the one oh five. So we're getting closer. Uh, had a conversation, uh, with Mike Pastore. Um, and, and just, you know, from the, the feedback he's been getting and the feedback that, that we've been giving him. That, that he feels like, um, that they're, we're trending in the right direction and the feedback has been positive. So we kind of left it at that. Um, they are not ready to vote on any budgets yet. I think they're still waiting for the selectmen, you know, they're meeting right now. So, um, they're not going to vote anytime soon, but at, at this point, and we're still going to work on it. And as new numbers come in or anything else in terms of retirements come in, we'll reduce. But we're at four point two right now, uh, which again, as Chris has mentioned before at other meetings, that it's really like a three point six. Because if they take away that bus issue, right, it's three point six or so.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the, just the special education, unexpected increase in special education transportation. Couldn't predict and can't control for was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So. And then we don't have to, and that's mainly we have to spend, so. So I, I agree. I think it's a three point six or three point seven.
And our target's been four all year. That's what we tried to get at. So we're closer than that. I know that was again, for those that weren't at other meetings, um, that was something that the board's like, and the school committee and the Warren Committee had about last year. In terms of override that, um, the agreement was never signed, but that was always the target. Override pass, that would be around four percent. So that's where we are at this point.
Yeah, again, that, that specifically carved out unexpected expenses like that.
Correct. Enroll in, those kinds of things, absolutely.
So what's the new bottom line number, Dr. Morris?
Uh, let's see. So the increase is, uh, one million four hundred eighty five thousand six fifty five. I don't have the new bottom line on here. We need to vote the new, school committee needs to, and school committee is going to adopt this as its new recommend, recommend, and they're ready to vote. Michael, you know what the, you add up the bottom, the bottom line number? I called my phone and had, uh, what's that? Yeah, you want to be precise, you want to be precise. You're right. Excuse me. My wife keeps telling me to let that out, but it's going to get all.
Thank you for just.
Again, the aneurysm every time it happens.
Forty-five minutes or so. Thank you.
So I had anything that, and I haven't had any indication we're going to be called back to the Warren Committee. Okay, after our last meeting. So in between our last school committee and this meeting, we were at the Warren Committee, answered the questions and. You know, try to go in that direction that they'd like us to go. I don't think anyone has any feedback from that last one. I, I got a little from, from some folks, but. No, it's a good meeting. Do you have the bottom line number for? I'm sure, I think that you said you were going to table the town of Medfield budget policy?
Yes, we're going to table that.
We're going to table that. Um, so. As far as future elementary enrollment, there's nothing good to report there. The kindergarten numbers have stayed steady. So when there's a shift, most kindergarten numbers are certainly good enough back to the debate over so untrackable we have in terms of space. Numbers, teachers, et cetera. So we're good.
Really on the temporary state season quite yet.
Right, right.
Really penny, penny, anytime I say that.
Is, is the plan, the space still solid?
We're good.
If it asks.
Someone's the same thing you told them last time they asked.
Yeah.
Then we're good.
Michael, I have thirty six million five fifty six four twenty four, the superintendent's recommended budget. I forgot Mike. Twenty? No, that's the new. That's FY nineteen plus one, then four hundred eighty five thousand six hundred fifty five.
That's the role of Mike. One fast question.
How about donations? We don't know.
How about Dale Street project?
I think we're Dale Street project today.
That'll be quick.
So in your packet, uh, you had a memo that has a new O P M timeline, Orange Project Manager timeline. So looking, we're looking at doing, going back to MSBA on June third. So, uh, the draft O P M, uh, requests for services, uh, has to be into MSBA on March twenty first, two thousand nineteen.
Is that different than a request for proposal?
Yeah, it's just services technical. They, they use, they, they use requests for services versus the question. Um, advertisement placed in the central register on March twenty eighth. Um, advertising appeared in the central register on, on April third. Applications, um, due to the district, application O P M on the seventeenth. So we have to have a minimum of two weeks in between that. And then we'll be looking at doing interviews of O P M candidates, shortlisting, et cetera, doing all, all that process. So that's with Leo and I, uh, Michael and the rest of the voting committee will be doing all that work. Uh, and that gets us to an O P M panel at MSBA June third. So it still puts us in good shape in terms of our timeline. You know, they'll, they'll take nine to twelve months to do that work. So we'll be looking at June of next year, having all that finalized, all that meeting. Recommendations for location, schematic design started, um, all the focus groups and feedback, all that being done during that time. And then we'll be able to move forward. Still looking at special time leading in the fall of twenty twenty.
The draft is a mid, do they approve the final set orders?
Yes, we have to, so they gave you a template. We, Michael just worked on it with Tim Bonn Body and Mike Quinlan. And, you know, they send it in MSBA, then they'll always give you the blessing. Every stage with MSBA is, they have to give the blessing before we go on and stuff.
Medfield's really lucky in that regard, as you pointed out, you know, Tim Bonn Body and Mike Quinlan are Orange Project Managers.
Right, that's right.
I mean, Tim, Tim was one of the first approved by MSBA. So be able to have his, you know, but obviously they, unfortunately, they can't fit on this particular job.
But it's a huge advantage to have both of them on the voting committee to do those.
And they know what we're doing.
They know, so it's great. It works out well. So that's where we are. Um, let's start our next meeting. We have the end of the month.
Last one's next.
The last one, maybe, but it's going to be our next meeting. And then we'll go over this timeline with them and then they can score. So, 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 so far, so good on that.
We have a number.
We have a number.
We have a number.
The original request, that's approved by thirty six million five fifty six four twenty four. And the new, um, recommendation, recommendation tonight is thirty six million five fifty six four twenty four.
I move the recommendations. I move that the school committee adopt this superintendent's recommendation as revised FY twenty pledge proposal.
All in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty, thank you.
So on the transcript, please. So at the last meeting, uh, the folks at the R C P to gather some data on various bus fees throughout the area. So we looked at the town of Ashland, Dedham, Framingham, Franklin, Paulston, Huffington, Millis, Neade, Needham, Goldwood. Wall, Old Welsley, Westwood and Medway as the, as the communities that we chose. So look, you'll see in the forum that was, the memo was in your packet, the average cost of a bus fee in those communities, two hundred sixty one dollars. two hundred sixty-one dollars, seventy-three cents. Average cap to the family, five hundred ninety-three dollars, nine cents, with Midway being the only community there that does not currently have a fee. Every other community that I read has a fee. Um, you're looking at the range, you'll see that, uh, Huffington is at one fifty-five, Neade at one fifty, and then others like Franklin and Golewood over three, three hundred or over. Millis is also over three hundred.
Yeah, but in Golewood, the pickup truck's up for free, your, your court car.
Correct.
And your electricity is the most cheap.
Right.
Wellsley's, that's a tough one.
Yeah, Wellsley's five, five twenty-one for a child, uh, with a cap of eleven hundred.
You, the, the budget we just adopted, Dr. Martin, doesn't account for any bus fees, right?
Correct.
I think that this came from a discussion that we had, in which people have been kind of continued to ask us what bus fees were, and how much they would add, and who has it. And so I don't think there was consideration on adding this year. In Golewood, is this meeting one to be about adding bus fees, but it's really about data collection.
It's a starter.
We need to know what it is we don't know.
I think the quote was fiscal responsibility, and that asked the question of what the difference would be. How much would we save if we were busing for secondary students?
So we look at ridership at both the middle school and the high school, and, uh, we took the average of the two sixty-one. Maybe we can go with Mike for revenue. So one hundred forty-one thousand revenue, uh, based on the current ridership, the percentage of ridership we have at both buildings. Um, I know that we talked about in, in, in past meetings that the concern would be that ridership would go down based on this, and more folks would drive there, is the school probably would be more issues, uh, with traffic. But I think that's, everyone's in the same boat. I mean, the thing is, is that everyone did this fifteen years, and that's, that's the difference, right?
Yeah, but every, but, but other towns don't have, I mean, I understand this is just the high school and the middle school level. It's the last chance I'll get to be opposed to this, and we're going to be opposed to it, but still, um, you know, when we have townwide schools, I think, I think it's fundamentally different, and, you know, I do think it could, driving any more people to drive to the, to the high school, or especially the middle school in the morning. Try to drive down Palm Street, Palm Street in the morning, right? Um, try to make a train on that way. I mean, it's, I think it's a safety issue, and so to me, um, you're not proposing against it, I don't have to vote against it, although I would be pleased to do so.
Um, and I would like to say, and I do want to say that I agree with Derry on, on this issue, in that there really is a, an economic equity issue that we need to look at as well. That, you know, these other towns, uh, they are very much in the same boat as we are, but it's not, we don't have to do the same thing that every other town does either, right? We can make our own decisions about how we feel about what might cost one family five hundred dollars, and that would be a real struggle, and five hundred dollars wouldn't really occur to another family if that was something that's completely not as fair and reasonable. We do ask our families to buy iPads, we do fundraise continuously. Again, things that we do and other towns do, but I just think that we can, we have the luxury of this right now, being more thoughtful. And so I think. And the, and the times that we do spend so much time talking about how do we manage our kind of socioeconomic spectrum within the town? How do we keep on, how do we keep excluding people from town? In the smallest part, I think, we need to really consider that with bus fees, although.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure it's a bust, but it's a deal breaker.
But, but it is also sending a message. Now, it could be a message that we're fiscally responsible by adding a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars a year to the budget, or it could be that this is yet another burden that you need to take on as a family. And is that the thing that's continuing from wanting to come to a community? So I think it's, it's discussions we need to.
I think, yeah, because I don't think we can make this decision in a level. I think we have to, you know, engage with people and have those conversations, and, um, and I personally think if there's no value add as to, if I pay this money, people want to know, what are they getting for it? Besides the bus ride?
Is there, is there being sent additional sidewalks, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Because basically, there was, let me note that there was discussion though of, and I'm going to stick to this, adding an activity bus at high school and the middle school. And in your vein of being equitable, there are children whose both parents cannot come and pick them up, so they cannot be an intramural, they cannot stay after school for help because they don't have a ride home.
Right.
So it's two-sided, really.
Exactly.
You can remember, like, you paid that, but you're also then experiencing more of the school and the.
Yeah, but I think we should be doing that without these, I mean, a hundred ninety-four thousand, that'll be comparable to what the additional costs for doing that is. So that's, when you're dealing with only one bus company making a bid, you know, they could, they could hit you for a hundred ninety thousand. We've seen that they're, they're.
Like the late bus.
Yeah, I mean, we, we went from three bus runs to two when our, and our contract went up. You would expect if you're doing a third less run, your, your bus contract would go down. That's not what happens.
That's a different issue.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's tied together, because I think that, that's the problem, right? I mean, if you can't, you can't get competition in the bus runs, that all these communities I just read, they don't have any competition either. All right, so each one of the bus companies has their plan of who gets what. So when they get that new contract, those bus fees mitigate those increases. For us, we have absorption of operating budget, that's the difference. That's why it's something you have to look at, and I'm not advocating for it either way, we're saying that's the difference. It may not be, um, an extra bus, it may not be this, but when that increase comes, and it will, because they, they're printing money for the bus companies. When they get, they're going to have to get their money, that just mitigates, that's what you use to offset the cash. We don't have that, we have to wait for our budget, we have to wait for our percentage of operating budget, that's, that's the difference.
Right, this is another point, is that, you know, we are taxing everybody in our town, and, and to a certain extent, should families with school-aged children take a bit more financial responsibility for that?
Or an additional, above, beyond financial responsibility, more than they already do. Because I would posit the amount of fundraising, and this is, schools all have been blessed, but I would say that the amount of fundraising we need to deal to give the amazing kind of bells and whistles that many of our kids or students have in the nation is good. That is all in the backs of the C P and P T L. We pay for buses and teachers, et cetera. So, yeah, now, when it is a conversation that, if, if it becomes a conversation that is real and something that we want to think about, for revenue, it's going to be a very complex one, and this one we're going to have to get serious kind of community buy-in for.
Yep. So if we wanted to continue the conversation, what now we, what would be moving forward as to, let's keep talking, so to speak, because he's just mentioning it tonight, and.
Well, if you have to be clear that this isn't something that's going to happen, it's, uh.
Correct.
So whatever survey we do, whatever information we gather, we have to be very clear about that, because, you know, sometimes we need to, we need to make sure that we're very clear about that. Uh, but we should probably get data from, from parents, and, and I don't know anyone that wants to spend more money, but what that data's going to look like.
Next year is our last year of this term of bus competition, correct? Are we starting to negotiate?
We have a little, yeah. We, you have to try to get a, you know, get a price that makes sense. It will always end there, and a lot's going to fit in.
Right, I know.
So you need to do it in context of, like, building next year, we have FY twenty one.
Right. So would you recommend that we start to get data from parents? As well.
To, to, to get.
Do you feel how, yeah, to clear.
But I think we, we owe it to ourselves to do the deep dive.
You're the aggressor.
You know, and if it's a no, then it's a no, but for us to just, the five bus to decide, I don't think that's fair. No, to the community.
I don't think we need to do that question.
Well, I, I think that's exactly what we're here to do.
Yeah, I know, but, but now it's, yes, we are voted to do that, but I feel we, as Jess said, we need the community buy-in for that. Right?
Well, yeah, yes, you're, yes, but if you're going to, I can, I can promise you the best way to get me back to a meeting, and I'm trying to see this, to put this on.
Let's put on a December, and October, December.
Yeah, Chris and I would agree on something. We'd be right next to you, Chris. Heck, yeah.
I think the panelists, but everything they can do. I just think we have to, we have to be careful when we talk about community buy-in. We're never going to get a hundred percent, so I, I don't want to be, you know, paralysis analysis around here. And also, we'll never get a hundred percent, never move forward if we're going to say we want to be buy-in.
But that, when we have your data, that then should make an informed decision, whether to ask or whether to no.
So, but Dr. Martin's right, the data you're looking for is if parents want to pay more money for transportation. I can already tell you what that data is, you're asking the wrong question.
Except that I can hear. Do you want to pay? I think we couch it in terms of, all right, if you want these things, this is what, a hundred forty thousand dollars or something?
I'd like.
It's, it's how we deliver the message.
I'd like to see the impact on what the actual, versus the actual bus contract, if these are collected, and how much percentage we're actually offsetting. But that, because I think that's.
But then our budgets almost every year come down to, where's that forty going to come from? Where's that sixty going to come from? I know I'm arguing out of both sides of my mouth, but I think that's going to, that's going to be the, the conversations that we, that we have. You know, they're not going to be like a clear, beautiful path, it's like, oh, yes, absolutely.
But just to be so quick, if we're at FY twenty, regular transportation budget, that doesn't account for activities like bus and just boarding rates or things like that. It doesn't account for special education, it's one point forty-nine, so. A hundred ninety thousand dollars, it is a big deal in the hundred for a budget, it should be about a half percent, uh, twenty-seven percent, but it's not really having an impact on that number. And that number, I guarantee you going up by more than that hundred ninety thousand next year, because again, there's no other better.
So just one, one two, um, Huffington has the same structure we do at elementary. So what I would like to do is reach out to them and talk a little bit about what that looks like, because we see that as a nightmare. Uh, I think if you're looking at data from schools, it's a lot easier, because it's all those kids that live in that general area, but you don't have that school, and you could, you could do the mileage that way. But every child goes through each school.
Yeah.
If we talk about this, how you could be in a situation where you're paying for your child at the memorial and on Wheelock. So we, that's all the things we have to work out and just get information on.
I believe there are, there are campus models, they're, they're, they're on campus.
That's, that changes a lot. Okay.
All right.
Keep the conversation going.
Thank you. Um, Superintendent, if you could, to the committee, and Mr. Derris, to update, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, so just to give you an update on where we are with the selection of the Wheelock principal. So January tenth, interim director of mental Wheelock staff will over the process. Um, this is going to be over seeing that entire process for Wheelock, and director of construction. Uh, January thirtieth, provision posted, um, on mental Wheelock's site, and on school spring. March sixth, uh, I emailed, uh, Wheelock staff, and gave them three opportunities to participate in the process. So the first one is the Google form, which they gave feedback to me on what they're looking for in terms of leadership, uh, style, traits, those kinds of things for, in their next principal. And then also looking at what they'd like to preserve as in Wheelock culture currently. So those two questions, um, so I'm getting feedback of that from, from, from teachers as well and staff. Um, also meeting dates. So Chris spent about four hours there today, informally meeting with teachers. They came in on their prep time or lunchtime, talking about what they're looking for. I'm spending time on a Thursday afternoon, same thing, open dialogue, open discussion, what they're looking for. And then the third part would be on the screening committee, so participate in that. So we've gotten, I think, eight or nine teachers that are looking to do that as well. So those are the three options that teachers have at Wheelock to participate. Uh, on the seventh, they sent out an email to parents for interest in the screening committee. Uh, the cutoff date for resumes was the eighth. Uh, March eleventh, interim director of curriculum meets Wheelock staff, that's, that was today. Uh, March eighth, superintendents meets Wheelock staff for input. March eighteen through twenty-second, committee meets to review applicants. March twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth, committee interviews six to eight applicants, that's, that's our target right now. Uh, we're looking at the finalists to be announced on March twenty-ninth. And then in April, uh, superintendents, screening committee members conduct reference checks, and if needed, site visits. And then we're looking to appoint the principal, um, target date is April twelfth. So we're, Chris and I are meeting tomorrow to work out, uh, the exact time schedule for the director of construction and innovation, that's still open. So, uh, we'll be doing that tomorrow, and I can send that to you, that's all.
There's no magic to the call, right? It seems like a compressed timeline.
Yeah. Not really, so we're looking at, the goal would be to have the appointment before the vacation, that's the goal. So that's where the talk came from. It doesn't have to come in how these things go.
I do.
So, um, it may end up being after that, but that's our target.
I think in the last school committee, uh, meeting, you asked for, um, which school committee members would serve on various committees. I thought that, um, perhaps Megan and Leo could be on Wheelock's research community groups, and, um, Jess and myself could be on their, their, whatever you have.
Sure, okay.
It's any title?
Their research and, and innovation.
We should probably, you know, pull that up before we.
So I'll let Chris know that, and we'll be in communication with you folks.
All right, great.
Great.
Information, Iles?
Uh, just wanted to, um, mention the email that I sent out to parents today, and I also informed you folks that, that the department had let us know that Midfield High School is going to be, um, just a school of recognition of the June seventh safe house, totally awesome. I mean, we had gone in just two years ago for Dale Street as a, a school of incredible improvement, and now academic achievement for the high schools, so that's just a really, a neat thing. It's not a lot of schools that go, it's a wonderful, uh, ceremony, governors there, direct, uh, the secretary of education, just a really nice thing. So, uh, we'll be taking, Robert and I will be going, we'll take teachers like we did last time, and make a day of this. So it's just really nice, it's really hard work that our teachers do, our teachers administer, and everything, so, real happy about that. And I think the email I sent out today talks about the work that our teachers do, our students do, our support staff, everyone, it's a group effort. And that when you get an award like this at a high school, it's really a cumulative of, of quality, of senior education. So just really proud of the work that our folks do and our kids do, and, which is a nice, 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 uh, email to get. That's all I can say.
All right, and you turned into Iles, after the new budgets, and it's the new staple first. So do you have any closing comments, Peter?
Um, well, actually, a lot is going on this month, um, for student council, he has the senior stuff. But, uh, so National Honor Society is actually holding an event, hosting an event tomorrow, um, online ticket sales. Um, are, they're not going to be sold, uh, by the end of the night. Um, and that's tomorrow at seven, it's like a basketball game. Um, then also. Like ten-year-olds won this again, but I'll be there tomorrow. Um, then on Saturday, cutting for patients is a fundraiser for, um, Data Harbor, and, um, it's a great cause. You've probably seen a lot of posts about it, um, on all the Facebook, uh, uh, groups. And that's from twelve to three, it's just mingled, um, and other things that you can do there. Uh, and also Harmony Month, and it was inclusion week, I think, last week and the week before that. So, uh, student councils could be working with Harmony to write a compliment for every faculty member and student in the school, and we hang them up on the wall. And freshman softball semi is next Friday.
That's a crazy one.
And then for the senior class specifically, um, you're anxiously waiting to regular decision in specific, um, for colleges. They start coming out in March and continued in early April. And then the senior fashion show is next Saturday, March twenty-third, at seven P M. Um, all are welcome, and it's a fun night that helps raise money for the class.
Tickets online.
Yep.
And I do want to mention now, I might not be at the next P A, because I'm getting my wisdom teeth out.
You're waiting, watch.
A couple things to report, so I might be here with some tough teeth, so that's fine.
Don't push it. Um, I just wanted to thank you guys for putting, you know, yourself out there and adding to the conversation tonight. I thought this was a great meeting, but a lot of discussion. And, um, I would be remiss if I didn't speak on behalf of Chris, who.
and I would be remiss if I didn't speak on behalf of Chris, who this is his last, and it's sad that as you're going, I'm coming, and I haven't had a real opportunity to spend a lot of time, but I do appreciate your wisdom, and all of the guidance you give, and my role, and we will definitely miss you, and I do have a little something for you, because I know that you come straight from work, and you get very angry, and, oh yeah, you're really, really mixed.
And your arrival was actually part of the reason I'm leaving, because like.
I've talked to John so much, and I think you're going to do a great job.
First of all, I, I, we're going to let you have the last word.
Okay, you should take it with you.
I know, that's true, so, I would like you for your honesty, your guidance, and here, and immediately welcoming the East of the City a year ago, and we look forward to seeing you in the audience here, because we're going to flip the bus on the agenda every meeting, so, we're hopefully looking forward to seeing you, and appreciate your, your service to the town, and particularly to schools, you could have gone on and done other things, unless you're announcing a campus city for select.
I'm sure they won't.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I, I just want to say that I do feel like it was kind of a pivotal moment last year, where you had to leave somewhere, and I said, oh, Chris, and you said, I think it's time for you to hop, dress hopper, you can do this, and I, and I, as much as we were joking, I do appreciate your faith, and your willingness to let me learn what is an ignorance and insane job all the time, and so many new impacts, and if you handled it, and maybe will be kind of, help me learn how to steer the ball, and understand what's ignorance and what's really important, so thank you.
I always thank you for your gift.
I never know whether it is.
Anyway, thank you for your wisdom, and you brought so much to this school committee with your special education experience, your returning edge, and quick on your feet, and I will greatly appreciate you, you've been a great mentor, and so, thank you.
I appreciate that. So, she's still a little bit of my friend in there, but, you know, I think it's, it's unique in, in a school committee person that has that background in special education and former teacher, and then brings the logs with him as well, I would certainly miss the friendship in the last, in the last six years, especially negotiations, we always had, just seeing time for negotiations, and Chris, Chris and I don't have to disagree on those things, we always, we always work through it, but I just, you know, like, like many of you up here, you know, I'm a better superintendent because of having to work with you, so I appreciate it, I appreciate it, I'm going to miss you, thank you.
I first of all want to thank the people, the town people who have committed, like, in my brothers to serve for nine years, like you're saying, the first year, as most of you know, I ran unopposed as a write-in candidate, because I couldn't get my act together, we all the same, and then I, I, it's pretty much my honor to be, to be trusted, but it is a really important job. I just have a couple very brief pieces of advice, I don't, I usually make a lot of speeches, but tonight I wanted to brief, I have two pieces of advice, the first is to be positive and proud, in my entire time on this committee, I could kind of one-hand a number of people who go onto that podium from the audience to say, you know, congratulate the district on something, Gary actually became one of them, and he's been a repeat friend, I shouldn't say friend, he's been a repeat visitor to say, you know, you guys did something right. But by and large, people come here when they're a little bit dissatisfied by what we do, but that shouldn't make you forget that we're here to represent really one of the top prominent districts in, in the state, and by virtue of that, of that fact, one of the top prominent districts in the country, and in fact, the world, and if you think about where we are, where Massachusetts stands, and where the U S stands in terms of education, we should be really proud of what we do here, and I know sometimes, when kids come in and they want to address specific issues, we can lose sight of all the great things that are going on here, but it's really important, because people up here are responsible for making sure that we continue to have something to be proud of, to remind ourselves of things to be proud of, and it'd be great if more people could come in and say, you know, how perfect we are, but that's really not what we're here for, that's not, nobody does that for anything, nobody goes to the selectmen and tells them how great the roads are, or whatever, it's the other things the selectmen do, nobody goes to the water commission and tells them how great the water is, and nobody's going to come to the school committee and tell them how great this is.
Schools are wonderful.
It's up to you to be positive and be proud of that. And the second thing is that I, you all are already doing this, and it's a big part of the reason why I felt comfortable, it's really important to be diligent, to know what's going on in the budget books, to know what's going on in, in schools, to know what's going on in the policies, I, I'm proud that I still have nine budget books, and I, if I flip through them, I can remember what our priorities were each year, and you all need to do that, because you were elected here, we were elected here for our judgment, we were elected by the boards, we're not elected by Facebook, although I confess I underestimated the impact that Facebook can have in getting selected, but Facebook doesn't vote, Facebook is another place where people are very, very positive, we're here because the vast majority of people, watch what's going on in some of those groups, and laugh at people who are constantly going back and forth to each other, we're here because those people who are, who are not being part of that negativity, and I'm not on Facebook, so I, I just give it's negative, we're, those people vote for us, because they trust your judgment, they trust our judgment, and they want you to continue to do a great job, be a great worker in the community, yes, I know you love, you're part of the reason why I'm willing to step aside, you can do a great job, I'll be back, especially if you bring up bus fees. With that, madam chair, I move to German.
Can you have a second?
Second.
I guess.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The preceding was a production of Medfield TV Community Shows.